Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon FiOS, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the Municipal Building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order our council business meeting, January 28th, 2014. Actually, we're about to resume our meeting. Ms. LaSina?
Everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have given all of us. We ask that you bless those who are not with us, who might be out there in the cold. We ask that you keep them safe and help them find a place to keep warm. Father, we ask that you protect those who protect us, our men and women in uniform overseas, our men and women here in Scotch Plains and surrounding towns. We ask that you protect them in their business of protecting us. We ask that you oversee these proceedings, and we ask that you bless us with wisdom and guidance. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Are we ready, folks? Ms. LaSina, would you call the roll again?
Mrs. Giolinella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vastin?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone who wishes to address this council, do so by coming forward, seeing the mics, state your name and address.
Good evening, Council. Albert Muller, Ramapho Way. A couple things. Have you guys noticed in the newspaper last week and on the patch today, our town has been rated number one in Union County for safety, 33 overall in New Jersey? And I think we owe a debt of gratitude to our chief and the police department, and I wish you'd pass that on to the chief. I wish you'd hear it so we could do it in person. Second thing is about the operation of the meetings. Folks, some of the meetings are, last time in particular, an example, the meeting degenerated into somewhat an embarrassing thing for our town. Counselor was doing his best efforts of trying to control the five of you. And it's not just one person. We're having people talk over each other, we're having yelling out rules of order, we're having things happen that apparently other members don't know, other council members don't know about. We need you folks to act as a team. I realize you're different parties, but regardless, this is one town. We need you not to turn these town council meetings into a circus. Be professional, as you are in your jobs, I'm sure, but, you know, bring your points up. Don't get on a soapbox and plead for whatever your cause happens to be. State your case, and let everybody else get their point. And Mayor, you're the center point on this. You know, you obviously have certain requirements or details associated with your position that, please, do what you can to control the rest of the four. And the rest of the four cooperate with them. And Counselor, my heart's out to you. It's like herding cats. But keep in mind, a lot of us are standing behind you. We appreciate what you did.
Thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it. Thank you, sir, as always.
Frank Festa, Ramapho Way, good evening, Council. If I picked up the phone and called the main number, would I be pleasantly surprised and hear that there's winter hours, or will I still get the summer hours?
Summer.
Thank you. Does the county, does the mayor know who the Scotch Plains Realty Investors Incorporated, a New Jersey corporation, Seven Mountain, Mount Bethel Road Warren is? They apparently own the Terry Lou Zoo. Just saying. Do we know how many apartments are vacant in the senior housing development?
(Inaudible).
Okay, so we can assume that there are at least three?
Yes.
Can somebody get back to me with the turnaround time that it would normally take when one tenant leaves, for whatever reason they leave, or why they leave, and a new tenant occupies that property? Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Terry, Raway Road. Volunteering remains strong in our nation. One in four Americans volunteer. Volunteering continues to be a vital component of the fabric of our nation and communities, enriching both our communities and who serve. Altogether, 65.5 billion Americans volunteered nearly 7.9 billion hours last year. The estimated value of the volunteer service is nearly $175 billion, based on the independent sector's estimate of the average value of volunteers' hour. One of the better-known benefits of volunteering is the impact on the community. Unpaid volunteers are often the glue that holds the community together. Volunteering allows one to connect to our community and make it a better place. It has become increasingly apparent that some of our local officials are less than enthusiastic in support of citizen volunteer projects that are important to our town's tradition, identifying our historic sites, and preserving significant buildings that make Scotch Plains the unique community of which we are so proud. It seems in these times of fiscal limitations, the town should be more amenable to these types of community volunteer efforts, which are a minimal expense to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Terry. Greatly appreciate your comments, and I think I can speak on behalf of the entire council to say that this town would not operate if it had not been, and is not, was not, for its valued volunteers. Sir?
My name is Guido Pesucci, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. As you know, we've been coming over here since October, tried to resolve some of these activities that's going on with Derby Road, Rashfront. And let's get specific over here. The outside activities, not inside activities. We came over here in October to inquire about some of these activities. We had a meeting with the mayor and manager in November. We addressed our concerns about these outside activities. No answers have been given to us. We came over here back in December, no answer's been given to us. And we feel that we've been pushed around here, and the time has come to stop this nonsense. Therefore, I informed the Township Council that start on February 1st, Mr. Pesucci's gonna stop tax payments to the Township of Scotch Plains. That money's gonna go into an escrow account to hire a legal team to defend myself and investigate these activities that's going on over here due to the fact that the Township, my natural neighbor, they should be doing this, they ain't doing anything. And every time they wanna set up a meeting with Mr. Pesucci, they come the day of the meeting, they call me the day of the meeting, to have a meeting with them. The manager yesterday, secretary called me up at 3:30, to have a meeting this morning at 9:30. The month before that, he drops a letter over my mailbox to have a meeting the same day, that nonsense, it's not good anymore, it's gotta stop. Now, if you guys are gonna answer, we'll have a legal team, we hire a legal team, we'll investigate the case, and we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carolyn Perkins, 861 Westfield Road, Scotch Plains. I have to compliment Mr. Muller on his comments, because I was going to say him the same thing about last month's meeting. I had seniors come up to me, and it was an actual embarrassment. We elected you as our officials to represent us, and not to be like a circus. I almost wanted to hand every one of you, not to signal out anybody in particular, everything I learned, I learned in kindergarten, and maybe that book needs a little review by some people. I've asked before about updating things, and I don't know who is responsible for your websites and your information, but the advisory members online. Mickey Marcus, you haven't been there as the advisor for a year and a half, because Lou Beckerman was at last year. We have dead people listed as some of your advisory people on there. They're not there anymore, okay? That needs to be changed. I understand Mr. Muller just got his heat back today. I'm very happy for you. But if you look online, Fanwood has a warming center, and that's the Chelsea. Why can we not designate a warming center and a cooling center in summer and in winter? Perhaps Evangel Church? I have no idea. But I know several times a woman has come up to here and said, "What do we do in emergency? Where do we go? Where is our comfort station?" We don't really have one listed. On the AM radio, 5:30, you listen to it, doesn't really tell you anything, nobody's updating that. Nobody's saying that, you know, the roads are closed, this or that, nothing about the schools being closed. I live on Westfield Road, so if the schools are closed, it makes a difference for me, because then I won't have a lot less traffic to contend with. Somebody should be updating that, okay? It's not just, this is your Fanwood Scotch Plains radio station, and that's about it. Listen to it sometime. Okay, the senior housing. I called today, just 'cause I was curious, 'cause I know Mr. Festa is curious, and I spoke to a woman, the number is 654-1313, and I asked her if there were any available apartments. She said, "No, but she has a waiting list." And I said, "Well, I really wasn't interested in it right now, I talked to some people." So I don't know what kind of messages we're getting. I mean, I asked her if you had to be a senior, a senior in Scotch Plains, and she said, "No, but she said there was a waiting list." So obviously, either they're full and we don't know it, or someone is fibbing me. That's really all I have to say. I just feel that as a town where many of you, or a number of you, grew up in, I've lived here almost 50 years. This is not my home. My home is Midwest. But if we're going to make the town a better place to live in, we all have to work together. And as a council, you do not all have to like each other, but you do have to work together to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you once again for your comments. Just to follow up to, if I may, just to follow up, ma'am, as you know, in my state of the town address in January, we spoke to the idea of making, looking to control the flow of information from the municipality to make sure that, whether it's a website, radio station, a television station, that it get updated, and in discussions with our manager. And I'm certain we will identify a person, as other municipalities have, to make sure that that information is correct and it's kept current. So I promise you, that's a commitment that this council intends to, has made, or I had made, and I'm certain this council intends to keep, to keep all of us informed, because being informed keeps us safe, okay? It makes us knowledgeable where to go when we, when we need help. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Can I add something?
Please.
Mrs. Perkins, you brought up the website, and that is something that has been discussed. I know I've discussed it. Mr. James is well aware of it. I believe that if you go to the website now, you will see the references to all the council members and all the committees that we're liaisons to. And they're accurate.
Was it yours today?
Well, I went on, I went on the website today, and it was accurate today. So unless it's changed since this afternoon, Jerry, I think maybe you can, yeah, Jerry confirmed it, it's now up to date. And I'm not sure which committee you were referring to with regard to me, Senior Citizen Advisory, which I am liaison to. And if you go to the website, you will see it there, and it lists every member of the council and all the committees that were liaisons to. Up to date.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for your comments. We know we have work to do. As Deputy Mayor Marcus just mentioned, you know, I mean, he's obviously following it as well, and it's a commitment we, as a community, have to make, and we will make it.
Mayor, have a comment as well?
I have anything as well.
I really don't wanna, I mean, I think the message is, what we've heard, is that we need to do a better job communicating. I think we've heard that we have the facilities vis-à-vis the website, which you are now the liaison to our technology group, whether it's our senior citizens' housing. We have some work on centralizing and getting information out to the public. We will be working on it. I'd rather not hold it.
It's a very specific point to the senior citizen housing, if I may?
Please, Mr. Jones.
As the liaison to senior citizen housing, the first meeting I'll be attending of that organization is tomorrow, actually. But I did speak with the chair of that organization, to the point of vacancies there. There are typically always vacancies ongoing, because when somebody either passes or moves away, that takes a little bit of time for a new, for the individual units to be cleaned and prepped for the next one. I'll find out some more information and report back in terms of, as Mr. Festa asked, exactly how long those typically are, but, but it is the case that, that it's at capacity, and any vacancies are there are just because they're happening for a short period before the next person moves in.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Can I ask a question at this time, relating to one of the comments that was made?
To run into the question, by all means.
So my question would be that, I mentioned it earlier, in 2013, and now, the last time we were discussing the portable 911, and the chief was here. I think the public really does deserve a presentation on the updates that we've made to emergency management. And of that would naturally come information like the warming station, what provisions we've made. So if we have a light meeting agenda for next week, would it be a possibility to have that presentation?
(Inaudible). I know we have cable TV.
Oh, seniors and...
Seniors and...
Your budget presentation.
(Inaudible).
That's important.
Wait, wait, we're gonna do that this Tuesday?
(Inaudible).
Okay, let's not pile on, then, folks.
And then, to that end, though, as you start to work on the budget, and we do have conversations about things like the warming station, could we have a subsequent, I mean, could you look at the budget money for 2014 and see if there's a possibility about funding a generator at the rescue squad, so that that could serve that second floor when possible in emergencies as well?
Let's get into the budget. When we get into the budget, I think your points are well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll just close the public comment section, and moving right along. Approval of the council minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the council minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval the council meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2013, and December 17, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item up on our agenda is the communications consent agenda. Do I have a motion to move the communications consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval the communications consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the planning board meeting of November 13, 2013, and the zoning board of adjustment meetings of October 3, 2013, and November 7, 2013. And I would like to also include, is that right?
Yes.
Communications consent.
Yes, we received notice on this.
Determination and award certificate for the 2014 bond anticipation note issued in the amount of $4,800,000.
Is there a second? A second? Please, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Accept the communications consent agenda, okay? Next thing is the manager's report. Mr. James?
Sure. A couple things, I was gonna actually comment on that safety issue that was raised by one of the residents. Remember, there were various studies, there were serious measures, but the community, the population of 25,000 people. And, you know, probably the vote's not really as private, we were there to accommodate this, we're aware of safety, I think we all know that, sometimes not to be memorialized, and there wasn't a huge difference between number one and number three. Now, all these studies can be submitted to some extent, but all the methods in the study include some, I think there's some sense in our police department and our residents. So also, you know, we're, you know, we're... Budget, as briefly mentioned, I will be giving you some information on the budget by the next meeting. Bonnie, within the next couple days, I'll be asking her to reach out to you as far as getting timeframes, what is scheduled, might be available for, you know, work session type meetings, sort of, you know, talk. Next question, the department heads, they need, obviously, the recreation, including some of the works, and hopefully within the next meeting, we can do it. So, when I say the budget will be spent at the next meeting, I don't mean that it's going to be, you know, what's involved, that'll be a separate meeting. Now, you guys, what do you wanna do down at the night, or Saturday morning? Next meeting will be, there's the two public hearings on that cable TV franchise, Jeff and I will have a meeting, the cable company, they're gonna come before you, represent, have required by law, next meeting, after that meeting. So you'll just listen, you'll ask questions, I made sure you guys all had a copy of the votes, you can, and then, after that meeting, Jeff and I will sit down with them, negotiate based on some of their feedback, we can get the individual areas approved, you know, with, then it'll be an ordinance for first reading, then it'll be another public hearing, just like traditional ordinance. And we'll be back, and we'll see what we can accomplish. Bonnie and I will be on a kickoff call, with respect to the grant, his cable's agenda is issued tomorrow morning. That's moving fast, as I mentioned, the last time we got together, that's all that we were willing to do, just making sure we wanted to be as fast as possible. So we have a kickoff call tomorrow. The IEDs are in house, we have them, we can see them relatively early. With respect to coverage for the IEDs, I think we'll be there at your discretion, to hurt, we'll feel best to you, submit us, you know, whatever, I don't have enough data. I have this, and try and pick one that I think everybody would like, pretty certainly possible, so.
There's a New York Yankee emblem on it, I'm certain.
Yeah, of course. So, you know, if you like, did you see it online, and you wanna show it to me, or if you wanted to buy it, it's pretty similar to the next one. Kind of on social network, I know, I know some of you have known, started Facebook page, you're a brand, but like, if, well, I have to beg your word, I can tell you that, you know, on my end, as the administrator here, and I actually went through this, council Jones, that you can pretty much see every time something gets clicked on, every time something gets looked on, the analytics on a pretty basic. And I can tell you that there is significantly more popular than the information you see on your website. There are a large number of people looking at that on a regular basis, clicking on links on a regular basis, and getting through our information through that. You know, it is 2014, it's a free mechanism for advertising, and it is really blowing up pretty quick, just within about the first three weeks. You know, I'm administrator on a senior education, administrator, I'm doing a great job on it. And I think that's just gonna grow, you know, that's probably one of the ways to get information out, it's just, it's gonna be out, you know, so, keep an eye out for that. Actually, I've talked to Council Jones, he stopped in sessions, he went to, I know, pretty old officials, and he walked in on something that the attorney and I had talked about recently, you know, here, well, it's the Council Jones, you know, on the issue, I think it might be something that maybe as a, you know, separate work session type, you might wanna look into. Rather than sending everybody to a session, if it's something like that, you're perhaps done that before, I've seen it done in other municipalities, I'll give you some information on that in a week now, and, you know, both they, you know, probably after a budget, so I'm not gonna watch that online, but, you know, I think you believe that there's a lot of value to it, whether it's, you know, Jeff, obviously, talking, whether it's outside people, talking, kind of, it's an objective outsider view, you know, function and process that, you know, budgets and finance, really kinda, maybe give you something to have in practice, you know, it's really a fuller understanding of the operations, you know, based on your, I think, you know, otherwise, all this stuff that I would have to comment on, the agenda items, if you have some questions on those, you know, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Reports of special committees, anybody like to share? I can see, Deputy Mayor, go for it.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have some information from the Recreation Commission. So let me get right to that. There's a lot here. With regard to summer camp registration, Recreation Commission's summer day camp registration is open for children entering grades one through seven, and takes place at Brookside Park from June 30th to August 8th. We're pleased to announce that over 260 kids have registered within the first week registration has been opened. Space is limited, so we strongly encourage you to register as soon as possible. The fee for the camp is $375 through January 31st, that's just a couple more days. After that date, the fee increases to $425. Registration can be done online by visiting the township's website and clicking the Community Pass link. For the small fry camp registration, Small Fry Camp for children whose ages are three to five and have yet to attend kindergarten is now open for registration. Recreation Commission offers three two-week sessions with two time slots for each session. Space is limited in each, in each session and time slot. Each session has a 9:00 AM to 11:15 slot, which is $140 per session, and an 11:30 AM to 1:45 PM slot, which is $110 per session. Registration can be done online by visiting the township's website and clicking the Community Pass link. Scotch Hills Golf Registration, 2014 golf memberships at the Scotch Hills Golf Course are now available. Currently, the course is in its early registration rate, which offers members a discount on their membership until March 1st. Members receive reduced green fees, email updates, free lessons, and more. Registration can be done online by, by visiting the town's website and clicking the Community Pass link. Girls Softball League, registration for the girls softball program is underway. The program is open to all girls from grades kindergarten through eighth grade. Girls from kindergarten through second grade will participate in a clinic format to learn fundamentals and basics of the game. The fee for this program is $65 and takes place on Monday nights and Saturday afternoons. For third through eighth grade girls, they'll be broken into divisions and teams and participate in league play. Games and practices take place during the week and Saturday mornings. The cost for the league is $80 through February 10th. So let's get involved with Scotch Plains Girl Softball. Winter Brochure, the Recreation Commission's winter brochure is now available online and has been mailed out to all residents. The commission is offering a wide variety of programs, including programs for the spring break period. Brochure can be viewed online by visiting our website, www.scochplainsnj.gov, and clicking the Recreation tab. I have more. Senior Fitness Classes, the Recreation Commission offers fitness classes for seniors each season. Fitness classes include Zumba Gold, yoga, and line dancing. Registration for the new sessions of classes will be sometime in March and announced later in, later in February. Trip to Lakeside Manor, Scotch Plains Golden Ager's are sponsoring a trip to Lakeside Manor and Hazlet for salute to Louis Prima and Pavarotti on Wednesday, March 15th, I'm sorry, 19th. The trip includes lunch, dessert, two drinks, and transportation. The cost for the trip is $60 and leaves Scotch Hills at 10:00 AM. Finally, a trip to Hunter and Hill's Playhouse. Scotch Plains Golden Ager's are sponsoring a trip to the Hunter and Hill's Playhouse to see the comedy mystery Busy Buddy on Wednesday, April 9th. The trip includes the show, appetizers, lunch, dessert, and transportation. The cost for the trip is $70 and leaves from Scotch Hills at 10:00 AM. To register for either trip, please call Gene, Gene Dettori, at 889-4121. Hello, Gene. And that's what I have from Recreation.
That's terrific. No, that's really great. That's great. I'm, you know, your enthusiasm is wonderful. Let's see, will you be having that posted elsewhere, so people will, you know, can look up this information?
We certainly, we certainly can do that.
Maybe on the website, wherever, TV 34?
I'll reach out to Recreation.
Because there's a lot of information that's very valuable there, and we want to make sure that, to our point, listening to one of our residents before, that they have other opportunities to look into it. One thing I just want to point out is last year, we talked to Councilwoman Jolene Allen and I about getting discounts for our veterans who use the golf. I just want to make sure that's still on the agenda for this year.
That has been discussed.
Okay, hopefully it'll be, you know.
I have a couple of questions for Councilman Marcus because I wasn't able to attend the last two meetings as a member of the public. I know about the golf memberships, it has been discussed, but I was asking, I wanted to follow up on that, because I didn't understand, and this goes back two meetings ago, the hesitation to open up the ordinance, what the harm was in opening up the ordinance to include the veterans. Did they clarify that in the last two meetings?
Colleen, Councilwoman, yes, it was discussed, but I don't want to misquote what happened.
Okay.
So I would really need to confirm it, but I think certainly the sentiment is there with the Recreation Commission to make sure that the veterans are taken care of at the golf course.
Yes, I understood that, and I think we discussed that at the last time, and I know that I conveyed that to the mayor, but the one piece that I didn't understand is why, I just didn't get the, why, what the problem would be with actually creating the separate class inside the ordinance. So I didn't know if at the last two meetings that had been discussed more. And I do have a question to Mickey as the liaison, because you know that the pavilion issue that's been discussed for some time now is on the agenda. So I was, at the two meetings ago, it was going to be discussed at the last, at the next meeting, was there, from the discussion, so the initial kind of garage cell, garage shell design is the one that they're gonna, the all steel model at Brookside is the one that the?
Yeah, that was, that was two meetings ago.
I think we had that on our.
Yeah, it's on our agenda.
I know it is. I understand, and I spoke with, but I'm, I'm respecting the liaison role, and that's why I just wanted to say.
Yeah, it was discussed two meetings ago. Recreation Commission made their decision in terms of what they wanted to present to the council. We haven't yet.
It's on tonight's agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, right.
But that's what we have in front of us tonight to vote on.
Okay. Mayor, for my committees, I just wanted to share that the Board of Education had their reorganization meeting. Unfortunately, it was on the same night as our reorganization meeting. 7:30 tonight, there was an opportunity for members of the public to meet with the superintendent and members of the Board of Education and to hear their strategic plan, but since that 7:30 tonight, I'm unable to attend that as well.
So many seats. I'm sure.
I would have genuinely enjoyed going. I think that our schools are doing a fabulous job tomorrow. I will be reading at Brunner School twice. It's a fabulous thing, and I would encourage all of the members of the council, if you could get in and visit some of the schools, for those of you who don't have children in the school system, they really are doing fabulous work.
Anything else? I would just ask that, were those meetings recorded, their reorganization meeting? And if so, maybe we can make certain etiquettes on TV 34? Do you know what the was? Councilwoman?
I don't know the answer to that, Mayor.
Okay.
And then also, as the liaison to the Fire Department, I would like to comment that we, you can't hear me?
It's on the air. Okay, thank you.
It's already, okay.
Now, we're really having a breakdown here.
The Fire Department Dinner, I had the pleasure of attending the Fire Department Award Ceremony this weekend, and it really was amazing. And I know there's been some discussion of recognizing those that were honored at the Rescue Squad Dinner and at the Fire Department Dinner at a future council meeting, and I think that really would be wonderful. When you see somebody very young, in their 30s, being recognized for 20 years of service, it's really quite outstanding.
And I agree, and at a subsequent meeting, we certainly will take the time, you know, back to the point that was raised earlier by Ms. Terry about our value volunteers and how we need to recognize them. Any other?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Committee, this is related to committees now.
Correct. So one of the things that we, as you all know, are working on here in town is the analysis of the building out of Scotch Hills and the attempt and efforts to perhaps get that building recognized on historic registry, either state or national. I think one of the things that really struck me during the whole conversation that took place last year on Scotch Hills was the very rich history that the facility enjoyed as the Shady Rest Country Club. So with that, what I believe would be fitting and appropriate to honor the history of the Shady Rest Country Club is that I would like to ask our manager and our recreation liaison, Mickey Marcus, to approach the recreation director and the recreation commission and to pursue changing the name from Scotch Hills to the Shady Rest Golf Course of Scotch Plains. I think the other thing that I would like to propose for the manager is to set up a fund, to commission a statue of John Shippen that would reside overlooking the putting green at Scotch Hills, in that he was a golf instructor there for many, many years, and I think that it would be a great way of memorializing the history of the Shady Rest, as well as the contributions that John Shippen has made to the game of golf and to the town of Scotch Plains. So I would ask the manager and Councilman Marcus if you would take that to the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Director and see what it would take for us to look into changing the name from Scotch Hills to Shady Rest.
Thank you. Good comment. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple items briefly. I know earlier today, Ms. Terry spoke about volunteerism, and in our last meeting, we discussed a lot of new appointments to the boards, and what we didn't mention there was that there were a number of volunteers in town who served admirably for a long time and weren't reappointed to term, so I wanted to just take a moment to publicly thank them for their service. And those folks were from the planning board, Jim Fawcett from the zoning board, Karen Steele and Ira Bodenstein from the Recreation Commission, Mike Dempsey and Lamont Davis, and from the library board, Pam Dothe and Gina Lynch. Thank you all. Additionally, vis a vis technology, the Scotch Plains Police Department, I know this has been publicly announced before, but in light of the recent snowstorm we had and some of the announcements being put out, the Scotch Plains Police Department has a new application. Instead of using Union County First Alert System, they've transitioned to a new system called Code Red. And if you're not already signed up for that, you can go to www.scotchplainspolice.org, and there's a link there, you can click, and you can sign up to receive both email and telephone alerts from the police department. Finally, coming up on Sunday, February 9th, is the annual, and I believe it's the fifth annual Scotch Plains Rescue Squad Pancake Breakfast. It'll be at the Rescue Squad at 1916 Bartle Avenue. It'll be from 9:00 AM to noon. It's all-you-can-eat. I went last year. It's a wonderful time. It's Sunday, February 9th, at the Rescue Squad, from 8:00 AM to noon, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that update.
Which is a reminder that the 8th, then, because we want to be meeting, we do have a meeting before that.
Yes, we have a meeting on the next Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
But it won't be televised.
Okay. Moving right along, the next item up is our new business consent agenda. Before, you know, I ask for a motion, I'm going to ask if someone would like to remove something from the new business consent agenda and onto the other new business for discussion. If not, if not, then we will move the new business consent agenda, and I'll ask for a motion. So is there anything someone would like to remove to move for further discussion to other new business? Hearing nothing, or no one? I'd like a motion to move the new business consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move the new business consent agenda, items six through 11. You want approval?
Second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I accept on item number 11. Just to qualify that vote, I will tell you that item number 11.
That's why I asked if you wanted to move that to the other, for discussion, further discussion.
I don't need to discuss it, I'm just telling you what my vote is. Is that okay?
Do you just want to make one clarification?
Well, I'm voting no.
She's voting no on item 11.
Yep. We have had discussions about this several times. It's not that I don't support the pavilion at Brookside Park, I absolutely do. I've looked at pictures of the proposed pavilion there. I don't think it's suited for that facility, and it's not the direction we should be going in for our parks, particularly because our summer camp is located there. I would have liked to see something more substantial there and something that could really start to define the Scotch Plains Park facilities for the quality locations that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment there. Okay, we have the motion, we have seconded it, we've had some comment, we have a roll call, please.
This is Jolene?
No, excuse me, I apologize, we actually put it up already, I apologize. We're done. Got sidetracked. Forgive me. Other new business, do I have a motion to move resolution number 2014-45?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, resolution number 2014-45, with respect to the affirmation of the site plan presented by Toll NJ, the redeveloper, in accordance with the redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement, authorizing the redeveloper to proceed to the planning board, this is in connection with Shacklemax.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, before we take a vote on this, Mr. Lera, do you want to just give some background on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be very brief. As this council is aware, members of the public, the governing body took a couple of actions. One is they adopted redevelopment plan, that redevelopment plan for the Shacklemax property for general terms, but it covered other properties, was amended by First Amendment. There was then a formal redevelopment agreement that took several months to negotiate. That agreement was ultimately executed in April of 2013. The redeveloper, in accordance with the terms of the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement, was required to return and submit site plan and floor plans and elevations to this council and seek a determination as to consistency with the plan and the redevelopment before it could proceed to the planning board for formal site plan approval. I am issued an opinion that, based upon my review of the plan, based upon my review of their site plan compared to the plan and the agreement, that it is consistent, and it may proceed. I provided that opinion to you in a memorandum, and the resolution that you will be voting on does identify that you are moving that resolution in part based upon my written opinion, which I have presented to the council.
So.
Thank you. We've got a motion, a second, before we take a vote, further vote, any comments?
I do have a comment, and, you know, this is just a little new to me, the pool. Okay, can we talk about that at all?
No, actually, you can't, unfortunately. It's actually pending before the zoning board. It is an application that's pending before the zoning board, it is a variance application that is currently not by this redeveloper, it's actually by the Shacklemax and Golf and Country Club, they're New Jersey Golf Partners, I believe. They filed an application for the pool. That's not part of this redevelopment plan. There was discussion in the agreement about their ability to move at the pool from a location that currently was at for years, but was abandoned, to another location, but there is an application pending, as far as I know, before the zoning board, there won't be a formal hearing on that. I'm sorry, it's not the planning of the zoning board, it is the planning board.
Okay.
The planning board has jurisdiction over that application, and it's pending.
So the redevelopment agreement that was adopted did not give a specific area where the pool could be moved to?
No, it was envisioned that it would be moved into the golf course property. The exact location was not identified. They have identified, they have submitted a site plan, when I say they, I mean New Jersey Golf, they have submitted a site plan. It is an application pending before the planning board, and they will ultimately have a hearing on it.
So it isn't, so residents can?
Go to that hearing.
Thank you, that's what I needed to know. I appreciate that, I really do.
Mr. Lera, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
You stated the golf course, as far as it could be moved to some other part of the golf course. I just want to clarify, it could be moved to any other part of the country club property.
Correct, the country club.
Right, so it's not limited to the green grass?
That's correct. That's got some historic significance to it because of the greens, so it will be moved to some portion of the country club. My mistake, you are correct.
Yes, I do. Jeff, with regard to the plan and the agreement?
Yes.
The items such as the deed restriction, that doesn't come into play yet until they get their approvals.
Right, you are correct, Councilman. The deed restriction, once they obtain site plan approval, and they have obtained all their governmental approvals, the deed restriction will go on, and it will be on for a number of years.
And the same applies for the affordable unit payment in lieu of?
Correct, there's a schedule for those as well.
With respect to the issue of the payment of the DAM, V A M loan, do we?
It's been done.
It has been done.
Paid.
It's been paid, okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions related to this resolution 2014-45 from Mr. Lera? Hearing none. We've had a motion, we've had a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. I have a motion to accept the bill list.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, the bill list resolution, an amount of $11,977,477.82.
Is there a second? Is there a second, please?
I second the motion.
I seconded. Let me ask, does anyone have a question on the bill list that you'd like to ask Mr. James?
For comment, I can't imagine if I were a reporter, you might see that, or this is Gartman Canyon, you know the city of Gartman Canyon downtown, they're a lot nicer, a lot greener.
Lot nicer, a lot greener. Any other questions? Not hearing any other questions, or Mr. James, may I have a roll call, Ms. Lucina, on the bill list?
Mrs. Jolene?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Bastin?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Great, thank you. The next item up is our second public meeting, portion of the meeting for public comments. And anybody would like to address this, council, may once again have an opportunity to come forth and please state your name and your address.
Frank Fester, Remap Away. I asked if the council knew the Scotch Plains Realty Investors Incorporated, and obviously you don't, I'd like to give you a copy of the deed. I believe it's the latest deed, and it shows that the Scotch Plains Realty Investors, Inc. are the true owners of Terry Louzoo.
Well, to be continued.
Yes.
Sir, welcome.
Albert Muller Stew, Remap Away. I just want to thank you for a very good meeting tonight.
Thank you. We do listen.
It was a pleasure to partake of it.
Okay, don't let it go to our heads. Thank you very much, as always, for coming forward.
I'll be back.
I know you will, sir. It's always good to see you. Anyone else? I see a gentleman coming forward.
Edmund Hall, 1254, Wed Oak Road. Just wondering, in relation to the pavilion, if there's a site plan, you know, resident could review? I live not too far from that park, and I'm just curious what the pavilion consists of, the color?
We can reach out to the Recreation, Recreation Director and provide information, or you can reach out to a.
So?
on it, or you can reach out to him.
So what, one does exist?
Yeah, it's a, like, a site plan, like, compared to where it is, a diagram, what it's going to look like.
Okay, and that was already approved, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. Just in relation to Brookside Park, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with the pavilion, but just that park in general, especially that pond, it's in pretty dire straits over there. There's quite a bit of silt accumulation in that pond. It's very stagnant, stinks. You can see the silt coming right out of the water over there. So, you know, my point being, instead of throwing money at the pavilion, why don't we try to fix what's out there existing? Try to clean it up. And with, in relation to that pond, if it was desilted, perhaps it would have more storage capacity for the water, and the people over on West Broad Street might alleviate some of the flooding that's going on over there. You get like an inch of rain, and that place just completely floods. So once again, I live in that area, so I'm talking from experience, and, you know, just appreciate if you could look into that. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming forward on that front, and I would hope that we'll, you know, give you an update on the status, because I know that has been a topic of discussion. So here you are, right here.
Can I, can I address, can I speak to him? Excuse me, you know, I didn't catch your name in the beginning, Mr.?
Ed Mull.
Mull?
Mull.
Mull. One of the things that I would certainly encourage you to do is that Brookside Park, and this has been a concern of mine, and I agree with you, that water is stagnant. I'm concerned about it in the summertime. I'm concerned that it's not fenced in, and the park itself has the potential to really be something fabulous. I would encourage you to attend a Recreation Commission meeting. The Recreation Commission is a group of fabulous people that would be happy to hear your concerns and would really probably appreciate the insight from a resident in that area. It's a beautiful park, it's a great neighborhood, and I think that we should be paying some attention specifically to that body of water for a number of reasons. So I would encourage you, I believe they have a caucus meeting, Councilman Marcus, the next meeting, do you happen to have your calendar?
No, I don't. We had a meeting last night.
So two Mondays, probably.
Yeah, it should be, if you check the website. If not, send me an email, and I'll get you the information.
Yeah, I think there's narrators in there, you know, these sort of, there's narrators teamed up with it.
Thank you for coming down tonight. We appreciate your commentary, and Jerry will be back to him, correct? All right, while seeing no one else coming up to the mic, I'm going to close the public hearing and, you know, as for adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn? Do we need to do that prior to going to telephone, or?
You would do it after, after you go to the telephone, and then you would... You close the public portion.
Right.
But then you'd go to the telephone, and then you'd adjourn multiple more.
All right, so we're gonna, so we don't get caught here. Let's see if this really works. We have a phone number here, 908-322-2076. I invite anyone, and it really works, to call in to Town Hall if you have a question. That number again in New Jersey is 908-322-2076. Just give it 30 seconds or so. All right, folks, may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.